Welcome everybody to this special call meeting, August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, five P. M. We'll start off by saying the face of the league. I place the lead with. To the right, and I say it in a certain manner, to the people of Dillon County, for the same formation, on God, individual, delivering justice tomorrow. I'd like to have Councilman Dean DeProwell say the application.
That's why I had most gracious and devilous, Father, this once more again, we come to say thank you for your grace and mercy. We ask you bless everybody at this meeting, individually and collectively. We ask you to bless this council to be on one accord for the betterment of Dillon County. Our oldest, we ask in your son Jesus Christ's name, we give you the mighty praise. Amen.
Amen. Number three man approval again.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got, I got, Kenny Church, Mr. Allen Berry will speak.
On your, I think there were two focused agendas. My understanding is the first one that got published is the one you want to actually approve tonight, which has some issues on it that need to be either discussed or voted on. With the exception of the executive session, the county road maintenance fee can be removed from that.
Yeah.
You have to vote approve one of them. I think the one you want to approve is the first one that was published, but that's a few.
Most approved the first, the second agenda.
I'm sorry. I think he can just do that.
Okay.
Just since it's not.
Right.
I make the motion to approve the first agenda.
I second.
Only favor, a new discussion on, on that thing. Only favor approving the first agenda, raise your right hand. Because you want to amend the first agenda?
He said, I think.
You can just move, you can, you can go ahead and move them up if you want to do that. Mr. Chairman.
Move seven, eight.
We have, you want to make a motion?
He said you can just move it up.
Move seven, eight. I do, okay. I want to move Lakeview High School softball and baseball, so they'll be next, so they won't have to wait till this whole meeting.
Unless there's an objection, then I don't think there's any problem.
Okay. Read the resolution.
Let's go present the flag to the other people. Allen will read it. Allen's going, Allen's going to read the resolution.
I'll, I'll, I'll read the flag, man.
Let Chris, Chris.
Girl, girl, state champion, she and wild gators come up front, lined up in front of the table and try to get attention. Present.
Clay, we didn't have any part in that.
Yeah. All right. Whereas Lakeview High School is one of the schools which teaches the youth of Dillon County and prepares them for adult life, whereas sports activities play an integral part in teaching and preparing of young people for the challenges of life. Whereas Lakeview High School has developed an exceptional sports program for its students. And whereas the Lakeview Wild Gators, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one softball team has won the Class A State Championship, softball championship, and Dillon County Council believes this accomplishment should be recognized by Dillon County. Now therefore, it is resolved that Dillon County, through the Dillon County Council, does congratulate twenty twenty-one members of the Lakeview High School varsity softball team for winning the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Class A South Carolina State softball championship. And I will read the second resolution, and then I'll read the bottom part of both of them. The Lakeview Gators baseball team has won the Class A State Baseball Championship. And whereas Dillon County Council believes that this accomplishment should be recognized by Dillon County. Now therefore, it is resolved that Dillon County, through Dillon County Council, does congratulate the twenty twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one members of the Lakeview High School varsity baseball team for winning the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Class A South Carolina State Baseball Championship. It be further resolved that the Dillon County Council does further congratulate the entire student body, administrative members, faculties, coaches, and workers, cheerleaders, parents, fans, and the many volunteers of Lakeview High School. Without them, this accomplishment could never have been achieved, passed on today's day.
I tell you what, I just can't believe one school wins two state championships. The girls, they win the state championship in softball, and then the boys turn around, I never have heard that happen before. This Miller, I, I, I represented some Lakeview, present y'all the flag.
Read the flag.
Dillon County Council presents this plaque to the Lakeview High School twenty twenty-one baseball team for your outstanding work and dedication in winning the Class A State Baseball Championship. Dillon County Council presents this plaque to the Lakeview High School twenty twenty-one softball team for your outstanding work and dedication in winning the Class A State Softball Championship.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
No, just put you out. I don't. I think one of them's, um, Judge Bobby's daughter, though. Yeah. Granddaughter, granddaughter, not daughter. Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, need to vote on those resolutions. Need to vote on those resolutions. I already.
We have a motion, a resolution, a resolution to that. Just read, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, that's second.
Second.
On the favor, raise your right hand. And now number four, approve of minutes, June tenth, June twenty-third, June twenty-ninth, and June thirtieth, that we have a motion to approve of minutes.
I make the motion to approve this one.
Got a motion, that's second.
I second.
In discussion. On the favor, raise your right hand. And number five, old business, enterprise, vehicle lease purchase.
Mr. Chairman, we've got, um, um, got, we've been working with four or five departments. We've got two departments that basically have come to us. One is the code enforcement, and one is the, one we're dealing with EMS. And, and we looked at, one is doing, one lease explorer for EMS, and then two trucks for code enforcement, which will take the two trucks, code enforcement got down, and drop them down to other departments. But it just works that easier if we use code enforcement to, to let them have the newer trucks and letting them pass them down to the other departments. And we're still working with sheriff. I think sheriff's going to be, I think he's working on these.
Right.
Last week and next week he's still, so we should, hopefully in the next week or two, we should have a proposal from sheriff on, on adding those other cars to the.
Clay, have you talked with nine more?
I have not talked with all the departments yet, because some of them wasn't.
Will they be added on this site? Could they be added on this site?
Yeah, we can add them when we do the sheriff's department cars. They'll be many upcoming.
Yeah, yeah, this is just where we're starting.
This will be just the first, kind of the first.
Because EMS doesn't have a vehicle, so we're trying to get people that didn't have any.
Get some ones on that, too. And it looks like the explorers, we, we can get those relatively quickly.
No tie hoes.
The trucks, the trucks are.
Thugs are a little iffy.
Iffy. I mean, no tie hoes at all. They're done on state contract, and not only, you think we've searched for those, um, it's, it's nothing we've done, it's just throughout the town, country. We haven't been able to get trucks out there for, vehicles like that for, they just do state contracts. So we dropped down and got the explorers this time instead of doing the other ones.
Yeah.
Two of the, and we did, two of the trucks with the F-150s come with state truck, and they're F-150s with four-wheel drive, which is what they've got back there now. And we'll pass those two down to the other departments on that, too. We just kind of, we'll just filter them out as they go down, in the process.
Quick question, Clay, how did we decide that code enforcement is the department that needs to know or be?
Uh, that's a good question. And Clay brought it up, too. The two, the reason code force got two vehicles, two four-wheel drive vehicles that they have, and, um, basically, they're in pretty good shape, and so instead of, instead of getting, you know, two that may go to other departments like, like landfill or puddle works and stuff, uh, these, these trucks they got are in pretty good shape, and we feel like we could keep, we could keep a better rotation going, if we rotate them out of code enforcement or something like that, we can use them for a couple of years, and then pass down their vehicles as they're used, as a period of time.
So basically, code enforcement don't have to wear and tear.
It don't have to.
Landfill, so you take the old trucks, so pass them down, so no trouble bringing them back.
That's, that's the idea. That's, that's.
That's a good idea.
Do we have a motion, uh, do we have an outside vehicle lease purchase?
I have a motion.
Do we have a motion, that's second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the favor, raise your right hand. And number six, new vehicles, six A ambulance, two hundred nine thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars, forty-seven.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got a proposal, we got, we got about, well, this one with the ambulance and the wheel loader, we still got about fifty thousand, sixty thousand there, somewhere in there, based on that. Uh, we did, we're, we're in need of an ambulance through the, uh, through, because now we got, we got four ambulances, basically, the newest ones are twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And basically, this ambulance would be one ambulance, this would be fully, fully stocked ambulance, which we need, hopefully, due to the COVID situation, uh, the ambulance is based on one hundred forty-three thousand, and equipment is sixty-six thousand that goes with it. This would be the new lifts, the ventilation system in the back, and the things that's going to meet the criteria for the COVID relief efforts that we're trying to overcome. And this should, this should get us, hopefully, we can get it, get into a process of getting two or three ambulances, uh, this year, and then hopefully, our fleet will get back up to where we got two or three. We need to try to keep at least two or three all the time, fairly new on that. We've got ambulances now that are about five years old, so hopefully, we can, we can rotate the ambulances out and get back on the rotation schedule on that, and then that way, we can hopefully get, uh, back to where we need this one, this one here, too. And this should meet all the COVID requirements that require ventilation system in the back, the air conditioner system. We're going to buy the list of basically, um, the list that everybody's going to, where they can take them into your house, and they can actually, if they can get you on the stretcher, they can actually lift it up, basically, be able to lift you out of the house without having to have other extrication equipment to help you get that in. So we, we do not have that in Dillon County, so this will basically get us up to, to par with the other equipment here. And I want to thank Daniel Reedy for helping us get this. This is a contract, we're, we're going off the EMS, their bid out, and you can see this, they're buying actually cheaper ambulance here, which is one forty-three, one twelve is recommended, and this will be a gas ambulance, so we'll get away from the diesel.
Yes, they're, they're a lot more expensive to work on.
But this will be the gas engine here, and we feel like, we buy the equipment, and with that, that's about what we would do with the diesel. So I think it's, uh, it's, uh, this should basically, these two projects here should be this, if we buy one other project, I believe she flags it out in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, we have a motion to use, uh, D.O. Bond to buy ambulance, two hundred nine thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars, forty-seven.
And that's with the equipment.
Motion.
I got, we'll make a motion.
That's second?
Second.
In discussion. On the favor, raise your right hand. Okay, uh, six B wheel loader, D.O. Bond, twenty twenty, two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, we know we, there's a price that came off the, uh, we're going off the North Carolina contract that they got for wheel loaders, and what this is, is basically, this piece of equipment is at the landfill, it uses on the transfer station, and basically, what, the way it works is with the rubber, it's got rubber tires, and it's got rubber things, it actually, it's got rubber mat on the bottom, and it actually pushes the garbage across the transfer station, using it into the truck, into, and then we haul it off. But the problem we got now is that we got, we got the transfer station repaired, the floor repaired temporarily, but the problem we got right now is we're using, we're using a backhoe, and we've been using the backhoe, so every time the backhoe is used, it hits on the, hits on the, on the concrete, basically, it's knocking a hole in the concrete. What this piece of equipment did, will basically do, is basically give us a rubber bottom on the bottom, and actually enable us to actually push the trash, basically, into, into the back, the back, the truck, and then be able to haul it off. Um, this is, uh, we actually, the one on state contract, through the state, through South Carolina, is actually more than.
It's, it's bigger, but we, we're not equipped for something that big, so.
This is the one that Earl looked at, Earl, Earl Turberville with the landfill, that came back and said, this one would work, even though it's smaller than the one, you know, it's on state contract, it's a little smaller, and it's about forty thousand.
Yeah, I'll say, it's about two hundred on state.
But, uh, it doesn't matter what we do at the landfill, even if we should, you know, stay at, stay at the current site or go to a new site, we're still going to need to buy this equipment, to basically help keep. This should help reduce some of the landfill calls and repairs on the, on the transfer floor, if we can actually keep, keep the solid ways from being, you know, banged on all the time, during that way, we can actually push the, push the trash in there. So I think it's going to be, I think a loan will probably pay for itself on repairs.
And we're having to repair that backhoe so much because the motor's in the front.
Yeah, the motor's in the front.
Yeah, and this one's got the motor in the back, so it won't be getting all in the trash.
Basically, in the back, it's going to have like a front implant that actually pushes the trash in there, so probably something we should have had.
Long time ago.
Ten years ago, probably.
We've been using, I like to say a backhoe, then we've been using a trihoe, and the trihoe's got steel sheets on the bottom, just like an army tank or something, it's just tearing the cement floor up, and it's just near to have a rubber truck, rubber truck on.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Do we have a motion to, to buy a wheel loader, using a D.O. Bond, one hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars?
I make the motion to reverse the wheel loader to the landfill.
Is that second?
I second that.
That's the second, in discussion. On the favor, raise your right hand. And he'll, and we'll say a resolution.
Let me sure we, uh, let me sure. On the agenda that you approved, there's a land ballpark, all that agenda.
It's going to, it's a new resolution before we get to the resolution.
I'm sorry.
It's right there, new business.
It's on that old agenda.
Okay.
I bet he don't have a plan. Did you hit record, Lisa? Did you hit record?
Go on, go on, go on, Bill, that's recreation, son. Go on, you, Clay, that's, that's going before the recreation committee.
Yes, I can. Uh, I met with the Recreation Committee, uh, I think we met maybe a month ago, and we kind of discussed Gordon Park. Uh, we were able to present, uh, some preliminary drawings to Senator Kent Williams, and he was able to help us secure some funding to build the concession, commercial concession kitchen, along with bathrooms and the picnic shelter out on Gordon Park. Um, and, you know, when I went and spoke to him, I had everything prepared, and one thing he said to me was, you know, you come to the state and ask for money, we want to know, what is the county going to do, what is your skin in the game? And, you know, I mentioned to him that, you know, we, we've been talking for a couple of years, I think since Councilman Bones was here, about purchasing the lot across the street from the park. At the time, we spoke about purchasing it, that lot was one four thousand dollars, and now it's went up to eight thousand. Uh, we're with Clay and Winter on figuring out who owns it, I think the state actually owns it, and we can purchase that piece of land at skin in the game for eight thousand dollars, considering the, the state has given us a very honorable donation to be able to build that commercial, uh, concession kitchen out there at that park. And all the thing we have to do is purchase a lot across the street, and that, that, that space is going to be used for parking. Uh, I don't know how many times you go by Gordon Park, but when they're out there playing ball and it doesn't function, there's cars all upon the court, because there's no parking. So we want to purchase that, that lot across the street, and, uh, make sure that the citizens have parking, and the kids can run and play without a car backing into somebody.
Um, can I say something? I have no problem purchasing the land, but if we get three hundred thousand dollar grant, I don't know why we not first, using that grant to purchase that. We had a committee meeting yesterday, and I got handed this package by Mrs. Winter Miller. It's got stuff on here that, the grant's going by, then it's got county council, purchase land for eight thousand, prepare the land for parking, question mark, on how much. County council, table, chairs, picnic, cooking utensils, the kitchen, etc. Who decided the county council was going by that?
Council.
Council decided. Y'all handed me the packet, I mean, I'm saying, somebody had to decide that for, get handed a packet.
Yeah.
So again, so again, as, as mentioned earlier in the statements, the skin in the game for the county was to purchase the parking lot across the street, eight thousand dollars. Yes, we were granted, and I didn't say how much we were granted, because we have to bid this project out, and now even contracted that, watching this video, know exactly how much.
It was said at the last meeting.
Yeah. No, we didn't say how much.
It was, it was said at the last meeting, how much it was. But this is what I'm saying, and it's just my opinion. If we got three hundred thousand dollars from state, I think that's plenty of money to improve a park, that's what it was for, to improve the park. Now, some of this stuff may be a little much, like walk-in freezers, walk-in coolers, but I, I really don't care, as long as it's within that three hundred thousand. Now, you talking about purchasing the land for eight thousand, how much is it going to cost to prepare the land for parking? Surveying it, uh, packing it, bringing in dirt, paving it, rocking, I mean, how much are we talking about? And we got it up under the county, utensils and, and stu-, stuff for the kitchen and, and, I mean, we don't know how much the county's talking about skin.
Yeah.
But I think, I don't care really what it's spent out there, as long as we use that three hundred thousand, and not bring it out in general fund. And that's just, I mean, and one more question, how do we have specs on the whole building and drawings when it's state law that you hire architect to do that?
Yeah, that's why it's limited.
Who done it?
Yeah.
Who done it?
That doesn't matter. You don't.
I got a good idea.
You, you don't go before, you don't go before somebody asking for something that is.
As my own opinion, they didn't want us to use that three hundred thousand, because they giving us the three hundred thousand.
Right. Put something in the game, as I said three times.
They didn't go out the.
Right, right.
I got a question, Chairman. Have you got the three hundred thousand?
That's guaranteed money, it'll be here in October.
Have, have you got three hundred thousand?
Well, you got it, yeah, haven't.
It'll be here in October, guaranteed money.
I mean, I haven't heard.
I got a problem buying land.
We need to spend our money on that.
I got a problem buying land, we need to get the money in hand, make sure the parking works, too, before we.
We need to call for a horse here, because we don't even know how much it's going to cost to prepare a land. We talking about eight thousand, how much for the rest, question marks? You going, I mean, are you going to do that anywhere else? I mean, we don't know. I, like I said, I have no problem purchasing the land, purchase out three thou-, three hundred thousand. I mean, that's three hundred thousand dollars.
If we don't purchase the land, it's good. They might, we might not.
So now, he just said it was guaranteed.
The three hundred thousand dollars has been voted on.
It's been voted on, they're not going to take it back.
Again, the county has to show that we have a vested interest in this project, as I said four times.
That was part of the agreement.
That was part of the agreement.
Where's the agreement?
And who negotiated?
Yeah, who negotiated this agreement? Who has the agreement? Nobody but the county knows this.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, I represent the county.
You represent one council, not seven other counties. You don't do negotiations for the county.
Stevie.
And I'm not trying to say it, but I mean, that lot, me going to negotiate, you say you don't negotiate.
Y'all doing it all the time. That's all I'm saying. Y'all doing it all the time. We had an issue two years ago, where, where they bought a four thousand dollar vehicle for the chair, without coming to the council, nobody said nothing. We talking about eight thousand dollars.
Four thousand dollar vehicle bought, the administrator signed off on it, because we can't.
With the pressure.
The pressure.
All I'm saying is this, we talking about eight thousand.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying my opinion, that's all I said, I think we need to spend it off the three hundred thousand.
I got you, but we got seven councils up here, there's a motion on the floor, we going to vote on it, if it pass, we get it, if it don't, then we come back to the draw.
That's, I just say my opinion on it, that's all I get here.
Many wish, do we have a motion, uh?
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we purchased the land for eight thousand dollars.
I second.
That's second. In discussion, any more discussion?
And this is coming out of general fund?
Is that right?
Yes.
Like I said, I have no problem purchasing the land, I just think it needs to be.
Do you have a copy of that agreement?
Only favorite question from my end, raise your right hand. Oh, two. Resolution, you are triggered, we're going to borrow a stadium vocal fiscal recovery fund.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you, I finally, I would get a resolution done, it's a long process, I think we've got, it's a real question here, if you look at the Corona, we got a resolution, which every time we, every time we expend some of those funds for the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, I recommend that we pass a resolution, um, based on the rules we law, and the rules that I've looked at, through the Association of Counties and National Association of Counties, they recommend that. Uh, I prepared a resolution, and, you know, it's very lucky, I tell you, it, it looks like we need to pass a resolution. Basically, what the resolution says, it just says, a resolution, this resolution is to state primary tip use of the installment money to Dillon County through the American Rescue Plan Act, um, that was given to us on March, I mean, it's, Congress signed it in the law on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, uh, under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, which is ARPA for COVID relief and COVID, COVID, uh, issues. It says, um, down here, it says on June the tenth, uh, whereas on June the tenth, the United States Department of Treasury deposited the county of Dillon's first installment funds, which was two million, sixty thousand, oh ninety-four. Um, what reference to that, I want to make sure, uh, just to go back, and most of y'all know this, too, is that every county, every county in America got funds for this, every city in America got funds. So therefore, the city of Dillon, Lakeview Alatta, got their funds out of the same act and under, under a different amount of money. So every, and every county in South Carolina got it, got it on there, too. Um, for us to be expending funds, we've got basically four or five categories we can use to spend funds. We're recommending, staff and I are recommending, county council, use the funds for basically two pieces of equipment, one equipment we already bought, we bought fire and rescue equipment for apparatus for thirty-five thousand, which council approved at that last meeting, so that, that's okay. This, this request here is that, if you look on the second page, on section five, it says, is in ten of the county council that funds from the first installment of American Rescue Plan Act be expended, uh, to provide eligible Dillon County employees to premium pay at one time, work from February the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, basically, that is a thousand dollars, for a thousand hours, you get paid a dollar an hour for a thousand hours up to that amount during that, during that particular period from February twenty-seventh. That's about two hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, including benefits on that, too.
That's not included.
Including benefits, okay. The benefits will basically be.
Just FICA.
Like is required for that, which be extended to the second, sixth. So every time we spend money out of this thing, we'll have to do a resolution, so county council will know every single time.
Hey, you need to put the microphone, I can't hear you.
Sorry. Sorry about that, too. Yeah, every time, every time we, can y'all hear that? Is that better? Every time we use or spend the money for the American Rescue Plan Act, we will do a resolution every single time, because that's required. I think you could do it by ordinance, but I would recommend you do it, most counties and cities in South Carolina are doing it by ordinance, I mean, by resolution, so therefore on this. This will, uh, take into effect that we're paying a dollar per hour for, for a thousand hours, based on the amount of time that you work during the pandemic, from, from February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty to July thirty-first, twenty-one, you get up to a thousand dollars.
If you work seven hundred hours, you get seven hundred dollars.
Right.
Is that, is that talking about for the employees?
Yes.
I thought we already voted to give them a thousand dollars.
Well, then, basically, at the last council meeting, we basically had this on the agenda, we would come up with a policy, and this is what the policy is.
So we agree, we're giving a thousand dollars. Thousand dollars now, and a thousand dollars later.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, but we, but, but the idea was, we would come up with a policy.
Nobody told us about coming up with a policy, or coming up with a different number before this meeting.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, we're, but we're doing a thousand dollars per employee.
They're doing it, if they're rating it based on how many hours.
I don't think that's fair.
I thought it was straight across.
That's fair, because it's, it's fair because.
Somebody hasn't been working.
Yeah, he worked about 30 days.
Under normal bonus, you wouldn't get the full bonus if you hadn't been here the full time.
And that's what council basically.
It's prorated.
That's why, that's why. Yeah, I mean, that's a little fair to the employees.
Can I, I want to make sure we're good. I want to make sure we're good. So you got prorated based on how many days, I mean.
The hours.
I understand you saying somebody that just got here yesterday won't get the $1,000. But how, how is this going to affect our part-time people?
Some of them are doing much better than they normally would.
Right.
Some of them are getting $1,000.
Right.
Because they work that many hours.
Some of our part-time people would have only got, based on our old bonus, $250,000, $250,000, now they'll actually get $1,000.
I'm, I'm asking these questions because you know as well as I do right now, this pandemic is not over and this second wave is coming and it's hard to find employees and we're losing them about a ton. And I think it needs us to make sure that we are serving all of our employees from, from least the greatest, as best we can, because it's, it's, it's not every day somebody knocking on that door for a job. So I just want to make sure we're being fair to everybody.
I believe it's more than that, so pretty much about what everybody else does, thanks to you.
So each supervisor is going to report how many hours they worked?
No, I pull them. I pull my payroll system.
We actually pull, we actually pull from payroll system.
Yeah, I've already pulled them and almost everybody gets $1,000. It's, it's basically people that have not been here for 12 months or, or since, you know. So, and they wouldn't have gotten a hundred, a hundred percent of the bonus anyway, it would have been pro-rated under our old system, that's what our policy says anyway.
So you got your trash site workers that, that are all the time, they're getting $1,000. They've worked, they've worked all the time.
We're really.
Yeah, normally they don't get a key.
I just want to make sure we.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's a lot better.
I mean, to me, to me is, I, I thought it was fair because.
We're full-time employees.
Those employees were on the front line every day.
Thirty-seven and a half hours a week, that's almost 2,000 hours.
Yes.
You got dudes who work half of it, you get $1,000.
Yeah, that's fair, that's true.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I had a question, we were about to, we were firing ready to approve the separate.
It's all in the one resolution, to approve this resolution.
It approves a resolution.
If we hear that, well, a motion to approve the resolution. I make the motion. Is that second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yes. Resolution B, number one, we haven't discussed it yet, are we voting on that now?
Yeah, I'm probably.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the. Is that what we talked about last time we were here?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to be voting on that all about now.
Better not.
Okay, only favorite is right hand. Down here, eight, eight now. Fourth reading, an ordinance authorizing approval and agreement between Dillon County and Ory County with property located in Dillon County project asset and project county miracle to require a payment of a fee in lieu of adding a loan taxes by business and industries located in the park, to apply zoning laws in the park, provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park, and to provide for the distribution of park revenues within the county. We have a motion to approve the first reading.
I make a motion, we have the first reading of this.
We have a motion, sir.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been seconded, is there any, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Clay, explain to me how and why this will benefit Dillon.
Yeah, basically, Ori County's already done it before, they've already given us a project. The way the state law works, just so you have clarification on that, it is that.
They get 1%.
Yeah, basically the way it works is you have to, to give a fee in lieu of tax agreement in Dillon County and any other county in South Carolina, you have to, you have to do 1% deal with a joining county that has to be contiguous to your county. So the only counties that are contiguous to Dillon County are Marlboro, Marion, Florence and Ory. So basically you have to be able to qualify to give project asset, you have to basically give them a fee in lieu of tax agreement. So that's required by state laws, not required by Dillon County property, is absolutely. Ori County is basically one of our contiguous counties. We have done three or four or five projects with Marion, we've done two or three projects with Marlboro. Ory has agreed, they've given us a project in the past, so we basically decided that we would move with this project to do with Ori County, they've already given us two proj, they'll give us two projects, we're going to give them two projects back. But basically all we do is give them 1% of the money that's generated off that particular one project. It's not, it's not one project, you know, all the projects, it's just one particular project on that. So it's basically, it's required, same thing we do, we've done it with Marion, we did Wyman Gordon with Marlboro County, we did Harbor Freight, we had part of Harbor Freight with Marion County, we've done others with Marion County. So basically you have to do this if you want to, if you, if you want to give somebody a fee in lieu, not would have to pick another, another county to do it with. So technically we, this gives us an opportunity to do one with Ory and reciprocate back to the implement. And they've done a good job of giving us one project and then I think they're in the process of giving us two. They've already given us one reading, they've already passed one reading at their council to go ahead and move forward to it. So I think it's good for us to, to work with them, I know other counties that work together on that too.
Yes, I want to, you telling me now about this and basically, you gave me a quick class on it, but I need to better understand this. So I'm putting motion on the floor, the table is to the next meeting this month, so we can have a better understanding before we actually come up here and vote on something. I think the logistics of this agreement should have been discussed entirely before now.
We have discussed it, we let's discuss it back in June, since, since we passed project asset. I mean, I, you know, basically you have to do a fee in lieu of that project there to move forward, really.
It made about three months ago, we talked about this.
I think it was recommended, I think I recommended it here with the Ory, but that.
This is not in the tri-county bargain.
No.
It's not, we got to split two-thirds.
Two-thirds of the money, you know.
Right.
It's a, it's a 1% deal that we do with, you know, with any other county, it's required by state law to do that, really. So, so, Ory's already, Ory's already given us one, all it does is expand what we've already done with it. So, so there's just a little bit more on that.
Clay, how long have they been doing? This is a lot, the state passed this law, deal with the fee in lieu agreements, how many years it got, 15, 20?
At least 15, maybe 15.
But the bottom line is in order to get certain tax breaks far different for the industries, they created where you have to put it in what they call a multi-county park.
Yep.
And the multi-county park is a whole different animal than what we have out here with Harbor Freight.
Correct.
A multi-county park, they, we, if we establish industry here and we sign this agreement, this gives this country a tax break, but the other counties, no matter who we partner with, only gets 1% and we get 99. And if they sign an agreement with that county or with the industry, excuse me.
Correct.
They get 99% and they send us 1%. It's just a way the state created, a way to give the industries a break and it's no moneymaker for us or the county.
Right.
But 99%, I mean, I think this thing being really blown out of proportion, we've been doing this 15 or 20 years and it's a matter of you got to have an adjoining county and we only have four, I think, that touches, including Florence, Willmarl, Florence, Marion.
That's the four counties, that's it.
And it's up to the council what you want to do, but this has been standard procedure for 15, 20 years. Not for a while, all of a sudden it got to be the tight end.
I have no idea whether this has been an issue because this, this has been discussed and approved by Dillon County Council. And, and I know Marion County's done five or six different ordinances with.
We get a little bit of money, we get a little bit of money.
I don't understand.
I think, I think the problem is, the problem with it was just that, the new council, nobody's really taking the time to explain how this stuff works, really. And so I think that's where the problem's coming in at. I mean, we, you know, we haven't had any real new council workshops saying how this stuff works.
We're getting ready to have third reading on this, on this project asset, we should have had it back in June.
I agree.
Of course, we delayed it in June and July and then we're going to take it up in August. So, I mean, I think that, I think we should have kept it back in April, but that's just me, but I.
If we got a motion, it's been seconded, any more discussion?
There was a motion, the only motion I believe was the table.
So many, many motions, tables.
Same, same.
Many motions, table. Is it the second or the?
Second.
Second. Only favorite, table and a motion, raise your right hand. All opposed. Can I have a go with the motion?
Motion. I make a motion, it's passed, bill.